I would like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:01. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Jimenez, could you lead us, please?
Please stand.
The right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible.
Please be seated.
That's recorded.
Right. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Present.
Commissioner Mora?
Present.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Present.
Chair Carbajal?
Present.
You have a quorum, 5-0.
Thank you. Now, item number four, Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications amongst the Commissioners?
None, Madam Chair.
None here.
None.
And myself, none. Thank you. Item five, public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The Planning Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. Please note that you will have three minutes to speak.
Madam Chair.
The roll call vote is contested. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's okay, Madam Chair. There's no raised hands.
You're fabulous. Okay. So moving on, seven, public hearing. Category exempt, CEQA guidelines, section 15301, class 1, conditions used permit, CUP case number 834. I would like to call upon Planning Consultant Alejandro de Loia to please present item number seven.
Yeah, there was nothing. Oh, giant. Oh, it was me, my hand. God. I just wanted to move right along, gentlemen. You know, you gotta watch sports, but it's okay.
Righty. My apologies. So number six, okay, CEQA adoption mitigation, negative declaration, development, plan approval, DPA, case number 999. I would like to call upon Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez to please present item number six.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, members of the audience and staff. Tonight, I present to you item number six. So at the March 13th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the subject DPA 999 was presented by staff for the Commissioners' consideration. After opening the public hearing, the Commissioners had the opportunity to express their concerns about the proposed project, and several of the Commissioners had some questions and concerns, and this specific meeting is to address those questions and concerns. So if you recall, the subject site is located at 12222 East Florence Avenue, APN number 8009-022-046. It is owned M2 heavy manufacturing and measures approximately 201,690 square feet, approximately 4.63 acres. And 10840 Norwalk Boulevard, APN number 8009022039, currently zoned M2 heavy manufacturing, but changing to C4 community commercial for the new general plan, and the applicant is Goodman Santa Fe Springs SPC LLC. And the site plan is here before you, or the aerial. If you recall, a friendly reminder, the request before you is to allow the construction of a 99,847 square foot concrete tilt-up industrial building on a property located at 1222 East Florence Avenue, APN number 8009022-046, and associated parking lot on an adjacent parcel at 10840 Norwalk Boulevard, APN number 8009022-039, within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone and associated parking lot as well. The site plan, the recap of the proposed site plan. The development meets all zoning requirements such as parking, setbacks, landscape, screening, et cetera. It is consistent with the purpose of the M2 zone and it's appropriate for industrial uses. Color renderings of the project. A reminder of the proposed evaluations. It is aesthetically pleasing project. The result is an attractive project with a contemporary building that is comparable to other high-quality office and industrial projects here in Santa Fe Springs. And this is the proposed renderings. So issues raised at the March 13th Planning Commission meeting. Before you are the questions or responses and the concerns raised, and the responses were in collaboration of staff, consultants, experts, and data research. So issue concerned, raised, number one. Was a hazardous waste study conducted or was a mitigation for hazardous waste proposed for this site? And the staff's response was? A search of the EnviroStore hazardous waste and substance site, Cortez List Database identified 91 Cortez sites within the city's boundaries. The EnviroStore database had not identified any known hazardous site within the project properties or boundaries. The site was listed on the GeoTracker database as a former leaking underground storage tank, thus the case was closed and the information was found in RB, number R22987, in 1996. And the two sites that are nearby our site. Additionally, the applicant has agreed to prepare a soil management plan in case any impacted soils are found during the development. Issue and concerns raised, question number two. Explain how traffic will not be impacted by the 14 proposed dock doors. A traffic study was performed and it was concluded that the proposed project will have less peak hour trips than the existing news. A trip generation for industrial buildings is based on gross square footage of the building space, not dock doors. And the Institute of Transportation of Engineers, ITE, studies have found that the correlation of vehicle trips to dock doors is not consistent and therefore not a reliable, independent variable to use for the purpose of calculating trip generations. Issue concerns raised, number three. What routes will the trucks be taking? Will the trucks cross the Florence Avenue Bridge? Truck distribution patterns will be based on the allowable city trucks, routes proximity to the freeway system, and the project applicant's input on percentage of traffic oriented to the port of Long Beach or other destination. As such, project truck traffic is directed to the I-5 freeway and the I-605 freeway via Norwalk Boulevard, Telegraph Road, and Florence Avenue. And as identified in the traffic study, the trips are fully evenly distributed, and yes, some trips are anticipated to take the Florence Avenue Bridge. As stated above, this would be less, there would be less peak hours trips with the proposed project versus the existing project. And being that Florence Avenue is a gateway to I-5, truck traffic will indeed travel in the Florence Avenue Bridge. Issue concerns and raised, will trucks enter and exit using the Florence Avenue freeway? Confirm that trucks will not be backing into the site? So some smaller trucks could use the Florence Avenue entrance, but the main ingress or egress, which would be entering and exiting, is anticipated to be off Norwalk Boulevard, and these are the trucks. The traffic assessment identified the driveway off Florence would be utilized by single-unit trucks only, and all larger heavy trucks would utilize the driveway on Norwalk and also calculate in the traffic assessment. And these are the routes for Norwalk and both Florence, entering and exiting. Additionally, there would be no need for trucks to reverse back up into the site because there was a full access in and out around the site itself. The proposed project is set back off on Florence 390 feet and off on Norwalk 230 feet as well. Issue concern raised, will the site be used for truck parking? How long will the trucks be parked? The site does not accommodate standalone truck parking. If a truck was to park at the site, it would be one of the dock doors locations. The staff has carefully looked at all the questions then asked the last Planning Commission meeting. Staff believes all questions have been answered based on the consultation information provided by the environmental consultant, the traffic consultant, and the traffic engineer, and the experts in the field. And this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me. Also, before us is the traffic engineer for the city, also the applicant's consultant, traffic, and consultant, traffic, and the applicant as well. Thank you, and the environmental.
Thank you so much, Claudia.
Thank you.
Do any of the Commissioners at this point have questions for this item or the planning staff?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
When was the traffic study conducted?
The traffic study was conducted, well, it started sometime last year, and then that was when we initially had Tom Lopez evaluated. And then in September, I believe, Elias, which was another traffic engineer that we had, he had requested for a more brief and detailed traffic analysis, and that went into play, I believe, in October.
2022?
Correct. And it's been ongoing since then till the beginning of this year.
Commissioner Ayala, do you have another?
I'm not right now.
Not right now, Mr.?
Yes, how you doing, Claudia?
Hi.
I have two questions. I went through this report pretty thoroughly, and one of my two questions is on the trash enclosures. It says requirements 440 square feet, and it's only provided 178 square feet. How is that going to be addressed?
So planning is going to address it, building department addresses it, and the way they're addressing is either by asking for a trash compactor or having multiple trips come in and pick up trash on a weekly basis.
Okay, and then my next and final question is, you just addressed the parking situation, but in the report it says it's going to be determinate upon the occupant when they come in. So it's still really not answered if they're going to be parking there or not.
Parking in the dock doors or parking in the? Where exactly?
I was reading the report as far as the concerns about parking trucks there, and it's determinate on whoever the occupant coming in. It's determinate upon their business needs. I'd have to look for it in the report.
Right, unfortunately, for DPA's, we don't have a tenant as of yet. I don't recall if there's a condition listed on our conditions. I can verify that for you pertaining to it.
Yeah, I may be able to answer that. So based on the site plan, the parking will be within the loading those areas. There's no other area within the site for other parking. So regardless of the tenants, that's the designated area for the parking of trucks. It's not possible to park any place else on the site outside of that. I hope that answers your question. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Flores?
No further questions.
Commissioner Jimenez? Commissioner Mora?
Thank you.
Again, anything else? Commissioner Ayala?
Yes, I do. Would the applicant be willing to consider changing the traffic route instead of through Florence but coming from Imperial?
The applicant is in the audience. They'd be open to answer your questions.
All right, to the Commissioners at this point, let me see, I'm sorry. What we'll do now is I'll please note that the public hearing is open. If the applicant wishes to speak, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function. I believe he is here. Thank you, sir, for coming. Please state your name and city of residence for the record and address the Planning Commissioner, sir.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Hamilton. I am with Goodman, and our business is located in Irvine in Orange County. Yeah, so Commissioner Ayala, I believe your questions, trash enclosures, that was covered, truck parking, and Mr. Morel is correct, there will be no overnight or long-term truck parking accommodated on the site, largely because it doesn't accommodate it. So if someone were to park a truck overnight, it would be at a dock door. So there's no other truck parking allowed anywhere on the site, largely because it's striped that way, and I believe the conditions address that and the conditions for approval as well. And Commissioner Ayala, I believe you had a question on traffic patterns?
Right, so currently, the truck route is going to be through Florence, right? There's also a way to get to that building if you were to reroute the truck route through Imperial coming northbound on Norwalk. Is that something that you are willing to do, to change the truck route?
Yeah, so what you're looking at in the traffic pattern and the traffic engineers would be better to address this than me, than me, excuse me, but this is just projected truck traffic, so we really won't know how people are going to use the site and which roads they're going to take, really until they are there and how they use the site. From a lease standpoint, we'd be willing to encourage. I don't think we'd love a condition on the project, but we'd certainly be willing to encourage the end user to try not use the Norwalk and Florence intersection because we understand that it is impacted. The other thing that I will note on all this, though, is by doing this project, the traffic compared to what's there is actually a peak reduction in hours, I'm sorry, in trips. So the goal is that it will only improve the traffic at that intersection by doing this project.
What are the peak hours?
Good evening. My name is Jose Alari. I'm with Urban Crossroads, and our office is in Newport Beach, and I'm the traffic engineer that prepared the report for the project. Peak hours are generally, you know, 6:00 to 9:00 a.m., and in the evenings, you know, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., around those timeframes, and we look at those to be consistent with the commuter traffic because those are kind of the worst times, that traffic is at its peak, and then we start modeling from there to make sure that if there's an issue, we bring it to your attention, and then we work with city staff to mitigate any impacts on that. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the other Commissioners have questions for the applicants at this time? Or none? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter as well? If so, please use the raise hand function or approach the podium. And go ahead. Thank you for that.
Just one clarification on the question about taking an alternative route besides Florence. While it is possible for the Planning Commission to impose a condition requesting that the applicant use a different route, it would not be legally defensible to do so because the street itself, it's designated as such for the use of trucks. So as long as they're able to use that trucks in their normal, I guess, business, we can't regulate it. Similarly, to when, for example, I believe the city of Cerritos wanted us to designate certain truck routes, we couldn't do it because legally we can't, especially if that's a route for a truck. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I understand that legally we can't, but it's definitely something that we do want to consider. The traffic flow on Florence is already pretty bad, and we're talking about the peak hours. Those are one of the times that people go to work, people go to school. There's also another distribution center in that pretty, you know, similar proximity of a corner. There's also new development that's coming with new housing, which is only going to create even worse gridlock.
Yeah, I would strongly advise that that is not the course of action that's taken, especially if it is something that cannot be legally defended.
Thank you, Director. Planning Secretary, by the way, were there any comments submitted via email for item number six?
Madam Chair, no, there were no comments received.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to close the hearing at 6:22. Do the Commissioners have any comments else regarding this matter? This is a time for the deliberation. Any other concerns? Commissioners? Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 229-2023 for Development Plan Approval, DPA, Case Number 999?
I'll move item number six. Second?
Move by Commissioner Jimenez, second by Commissioner Mora. Planning Secretary, please call the vote.
Definitely, Madam Chair. Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Nay.
Chair Carbajal?
Aye.
Passes 40 and 41, excuse me?
Okay, so ordered, and our attorney.
Yes, Madam Chairman. The Planning Commission's approval of this item tonight will take effect 14 days after the applicant receives written notice of the Commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within 14 days.
Thank you. Now, public hearing number seven. Categorically exempt, CEQA guidelines, section 15301+1, conditional use permit, CPU case number 834. I would like to call upon Planning Consultant Alejandro de Loia to please present item number seven.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Today presenting on conditional use permit, case number 834, and this is for a new massage parlor business. So the subject site here is going to be 11235 Washington Boulevard. Am I cutting off a little bit?
No, sir.
This site has a general plan land use designation of mixed-use transit-oriented development with a zoning designation of C4 community commercial, and the applicant today is going to be InStep Massage. The subject site is located within the Santa Fe Springs marketplace. It is on the southeast corner of the site and is accessible through Norwalk Boulevard, Washington Boulevard, and Duchess Drive. Here's in a large site plan. The subject tenant space is 1,519 square feet and is most easily directly accessible through Duchess Drive. Since this use is going to be going from a retail use to another retail use, there is no additional parking that is required on site. Currently, there are 752 stalls provided, and that's with the requirement of only 731, so the plaza is currently overparked. Here's an image of the existing tenant space. As you can see, to the left of it on the image, there is a food establishment, and to the right, there is a retail shopping center. A little bit of background on the applicant. InStep Massage has been in the city of Santa Fe Springs in business for over 10 years at a nearby property at 11338 Washington Boulevard. This is in the same commercial center as Chris and Pitts. They offer therapeutic foot and whole-body massages, and they are operated by state-licensed massage therapists in addition to each of the massage therapists being required to have and hold a state license as well. And they have been in conformance with state and city requirements to date at their current location and have been in good standing with the requirements set by both the city and the state. Again, the request is for conditional use permit, case number 834, and this is to allow the establishment, operation, and maintenance of a massage parlor use occupying a 1,519 square foot unit within the Santa Fe Springs marketplace. Here's a little bit more information for operations. They are by appointment only, and again, do offer foot and whole-body massages, and these average between 30 and 90 minutes in length. They do have strict sanitation policies, which include sanitizing and cleaning the massage areas, tables, sheets, tools, and anything else that's used after every massage. In addition to this, they are also abiding by additional COVID precautions, mask-wearing, social distancing, and whatever else is required by the state at the time. And as a reminder, there was a recent state bill that prohibits us from showing floor pans without the express written approval from architects. So I have an image that just shows a similar concept that the applicant is proposing, which is to have an open floor plan, which means that there are not going to be any private massage rooms. They will all be in this open space and just be divided by individual curtains. And their proposed hours of operations would be from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday, every day. There are two primary policies that this project is consistent with within the general plan. The first coming from the land use element for economic diversity, and this is that the project is complementary to the existing businesses and will provide an additional experience for visitors to the plaza. So currently, there's a lot of food establishments and a lot of shopping experiences, so having a service-based use will be a nice additional complementary use in the plaza. The next policy would be within our economic development element, and that would be for business retention. And as I mentioned before, this business has been in the city for over 10 years, and they have an established local clientele with the area. And the only reason that they are relocating is because there are proposed demolition and development plans on their site, so that's the only reason that they're doing this request. As for the environmental review, staff does find that the project would be categorically exempt from CEQA, and that would be under section 15301, class 1, existing facilities. And that would be because the project does not, or the applicant does not propose any changes to the building or to the tenant space. There was a public hearing notice that was sent on March 30th, and that was mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the property, as well as that being published in the Whittier Daily News. It was also posted in City Hall, the Town Center Hall kiosk, and the City Library, and there were no comments or inquiries received for this project. And here's some of the key considerations. There are not going to be any proposed modifications to the building or the site. The only thing that would be proposed to change would be a new signage for the business, and that is something that would be reviewed and approved by staff when they submit. Another consideration would be that this project would be retaining an existing business that is currently operating within the city. Another thing to consider is that the applicant is bound by several conditions of approval to make sure that they have and are compliant with any regulations. And in addition to that, they are also subject to a regulatory permit, I'm sorry, and annual compliance reviews. So finally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find and determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under section 15301, class 1, existing facilities, that they approve conditional use permit, case number 834, subject to the conditions as stated within the attached resolution, and to adopt Resolution Number 230-2023, which incorporates the Planning Commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available, as well as a representative for the applicant, are available for questions as well.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have questions on this item for the planning staff?
I do.
Commissioner?
And the reason I'm bringing up these questions is just because we had an issue with a similar facility about six or seven years ago. So we have the hours operation. Glad to see there's going to be an open forum where they can do the massages. And typically, there's usually a pretty high turnaround when it comes to the therapists or their employees. How often are their certifications checked? Uh, how often are their certifications checked? Are they going to be on file with us, or is that going to be at their, at the site?
Yeah, so two things to that. Uh, they are required to have every single individual massage therapist, uh, renew their license yearly. And they have been already subject to that requirement, and according to our police services have been, uh, compliant with those requirements of during operations at their existing site. So it'd be reasonable to assume that they would be continuing in a similar fashion at the new location.
Okay. No, I've got, they've been there for a long time. Um, and also, are there going to be any random visits, uh, to the facility during the operating hours, or is that something beyond our, or?
Uh, that would be based off of, um, a code case or anything that would be, uh, you know, done in or called in by or to police services. But, um, in terms of random, nothing that would be conditioned, but they do have the annual reviews.
So for past ten years, they've been compliant and no, no issues with this business, correct?
Correct.
And also, there's, if the police services chooses to do a random, just go and see what's going on. They can, like anybody else, just visit.
And that, I have a follow-up question to, um, Mr. Morris as well. Um, do we know how many fines or violations they've had in their history of being in business?
Uh, I do not have that information, but according to, um, our code enforcement officer, he did mention that they've been in good standing with the city. Um, so I would think it's reasonable to think that any violations that they might have had would have been corrected through police services.
Excuse me, Alejandro, did we, as part of the process in getting this through to the Planning Commission at this point, we did reach out to police service and ask them for any conditions, any concern, et cetera, that they had?
Correct, yeah, and police services did provide their conditions within the, uh, within our request for conditions, they provided their additional requirements as well.
Yeah, but they did not specify any areas of concern that they had, correct?
They did not specify anything.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, my only question was, I know they are moving from the other building. Were, are there any other tenants, do we know, that are making that move? Or they just wanted to go there because they're not going to stay in the new place?
So, um, yes, we're, we're aware that, you know, the Chris and Pitts site is going to be redeveloped, but, you know, we, we don't know specifically which tenants will relocate elsewhere within the city, but we have a good relationship with the, the, the new property owner, and we can certainly reach out to them and see if, um, there's any intentions to relocate existing tenants. We can get back to you on that.
Okay, and again, our city will be conducting or making sure, like Commissioner Mora said, that all certificates are kept up to date and such.
Yeah, so there will be annual reviews, and then every time they get a new massage therapist, they're required to come into the city and obtain a state business license. In addition, there's state certification.
I would also like to hope that the Police Service Center will also update us as well if there are any violations and such that might happen. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, uh, thank you for your presentation. The only question I have, uh, according to the conditions, one of the conditions is during operational hours, um, to maintain one, minimum one-hundred watt lighting throughout the facility. Um, how do we ensure they comply with that? I mean, it seems like open space separated by curtains, which seems reasonable and acceptable. And also the lighting, um, is, is that just through, like, uh, police services or, uh, code enforcement? I mean, if somebody goes by at seven o'clock and it's not adequately lit, you know, they may not be complying with their conditions.
Go ahead, Quan, yeah.
And so, um, a, a, as mentioned earlier, you know, this site will be, as the existing site, will be subject to annual inspections. And, you know, certainly within those annual inspections, that will be one of the items, um, of many that will be followed up on to make sure it's continual compliance with the conditions.
Quan, I have a, another follow-up. So, uh, will their new building, where they're going to be at, is it going to have, like, still, how would they currently have with those blackout, um, windows then?
If, if there's currently blacked-out windows, um, our code doesn't allow for that. So, um, that's something that we would look to enforce with the new location. Um, that's probably a matter of just lack of code enforcement, but the new location should not have blacked-out windows. There's a limitation as to the li, the amount of window covering.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the planning staff? The public hearing is now open. If the applicant, uh, wishes to speak, please approach the podium or use the raised hand function at this time.
I have a representative for the applicant.
Thank you, and sir, can you state your name and residence for the record and address the Planning Commission, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Paul Gonzalez. I'm a resident of the city of Claremont. And I'm here, uh, to speak on behalf of the owners of, uh, InStep Massage, one of whom is my wife. And I want to thank Alejandro for his very thorough report, including his recommendation for approval. Um, normally, I would just sit and not say anything, but my wife told me to come down here and speak, so. Uh, InStep Massage has been a valuable member of the Santa Fe Springs business community for nigh on twelve years. Uh, we moved in there, uh, and the business has been successful virtually since from the first day, developing clientele, most of whom are, uh, very hard-working women who, uh, come on Saturday to receive a therapeutic massage. That's most of their clientele. And, uh, it has been, as I said, a successful business, so much so that it was able to support two girls going to university. And now they've launched successful life for themselves. And all that's been because of the Santa Fe Springs business community. Uh, we would still be in the original location in the Chris and Pitts building, but the landlord has, uh, told all, uh, tenants to vacate by the last day of March. So currently, InStep Massage is not in business at all in the city of Santa Fe Springs. So we respectfully request that you, uh, approve this so we can move across the street to the new location. Uh, the phone is ringing every day from our clients, uh, asking, you know, when, when we're going to be moving. Uh, it's going to take some build-out and, uh, probably two months. So we would very much like to be back in business and serve. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, and at this time, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant, please?
I just want to, uh, congratulate you or thank you for choosing to stay in, in the city of Santa Fe Springs. I mean, thank you very much for that.
Go ahead.
Um, I mean, we like business here. We, you know, we're open, uh, for economic development, uh, but you just made a comment. You said you have a two-month build-out, and this report says that there's no modification to the unit. Can you please explain that?
Well, perhaps I used the wrong term. Uh, you know, they, they have to move what was in the old location to the new location and make it look beautiful so people want to come to it. And that's going to take a little time. Yeah. Did, did that answer your question sufficiently?
Uh, a, actually, it doesn't. Um, if you're beautifying the unit, that means there's going to be, in my understanding, modifications to the new unit.
Uh, well, as, as Alejandro explained, and I haven't seen the plans, I'm here speaking on their behalf, uh, that they, uh, there's not going to be walls within. So there's no building of walls, all right?
Right, I, I can clarify. That's what I was going to say is basically there's no structural modifications. It's basically what's considered paint and patch, um, cosmetic items, yes, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Go ahead, Commissioner Flores.
What was the, the address of the previous location? I have a question. Um, are you familiar with the site called Rub Maps?
With?
The, the website called Rub Maps?
No, I'm not.
Um, do you have an idea as to maybe why your massage parlor would be listed on this website?
I can't answer that question. I don't, I've never heard of it.
Well, this website is intended for massage parlors that do, uh, side business. Um, and this massage parlor is listed on this website, um, where they provide other services other than massages. Um, I would highly suggest that you look into what this website is, um, especially if you're looking to conduct business in the city of Santa Fe Springs.
Oh, Commissioner Ayala, um, I want to thank you for bringing that, that topic up. Um, InStep Massage does not accept walk-in clients and, uh, only by appointment. And anybody who's looking for something that's not therapeutic massage, uh, is generally screened out at the telephone call stage. And they're really quite good at, um, understanding who's making it untoward, uh, in advance or asking a question that would lead down to the kind of service that InStep Massage does not provide. The, the city ordinance uses the word parlor. And, uh, and that's, that's a part of, uh, a, the legal framework of, of the, of the statutes. Uh, but a parlor is something other than a therapeutic massage spa. And, and I think it's important to make the difference. At InStep Massage does not and never has provided the kind of untoward services that you're alluding to. And we can't control what other people write on the web. We just can't do that.
You're absolutely right.
Only run our business, you know.
You're absolutely right, and, and I'm not alluding to anything. I'm just going based off of what this website is, where they're naming specific massage, uh, therapists by name of sixteen reviews. Um, and the website states where your fantasy meets reality, so I might think that's important to note.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, the Planning Commission Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email for item number seven?
Madam Chair, no comments were received.
Okay. I would like to close the public hearing at six forty-four PM, please. Do the commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? This will be the time for the deliberation.
I have one final comment, uh, based on that the research, uh, Commissioner Ayala came up with. Um, I've never heard of that website, but, uh, couldn't the Planning Commission reach out to our public safety just to maybe, if somebody is, you know, defaming this, this business, which says they're legitimate, and we don't have any history of illicit activity, maybe just refer it to our public safety department?
That would be good.
May I add a, may I add a comment as well?
Go ahead.
Uh, so I've, I've worked with other cities and have done, uh, a lot of permitting for, uh, conditional use permits for massage uses. And, you know, a lot of that does include doing like Google review searches and stuff like that. And it tends to be pretty clear if a massage business is operating in, uh, that manner and by accounts that, um, were found online and whatnot. It does seem like this business is operating in a manner that is, um, in compliance with the city and state regulations. So that is one thing that I would like to add, that generally, you would figure that out pretty quickly from like a Google search, not necessarily from a, a deeper search like the one that you had to do for, for this business.
Thank you so much, Alejandro. Is there a motion to approve resolution number?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Oh, I apologize.
No, sorry, sorry. Um, you know, obviously, I, I don't think, you know, um, Commissioner Ayala was alluding to anything, but, you know, we just want to be careful because, you know, this is, uh, something that, uh, you know, we have a, a great reputation in the city. We have a, a huge community of, of vast array of ages. And, uh, websites like that, uh, you know, for example, I'm a chiropractor. I've got a, I've been in the practice in the city for over twenty-five years, and I have a lot of our residents, my patients, uh, that are, you know, some employees and some, a lot of residents that have been to that InStep Massage in the past. And nothing but good reviews, quality service, that's all I've heard when, uh, from my patients that go there. Uh, so as reviews go on the, online, I've had one on Google that, uh, just completely bashed me for destroying somebody's rotator cuff surgery. That patient never came to my office. They mentioned the wrong person. I contacted Google, they will not remove it. So sometimes, you know, people could get a little nasty and give somebody a bad review, and it's not even true. Um, but with that said, you know, I know that we're going to, you know, um, you know, just like do our due diligence, make sure that, you know, everything goes, status quo. So far, ten-plus years in business without a single, you know, report from, uh, the police. Uh, you know, some past patients of mine attending that facility with no issues, so, uh, and like, Commissioner, uh, Jimenez said, thank you for staying in Santa Fe Springs to continue business here. Appreciate it.
And I would just like to follow up and thank Commissioner Ayala. Again, I don't believe there was any harm with that, but of course, letting, uh, the commissioners know and to let you know that unfortunately, somebody, uh, put that negative comment. And again, people can say things when they hide behind a keyboard. And the great, um, suggestion that Commissioner Flores had where our PSC should, um, also be aware of this. Maybe they can assist or whichever, but, and when you, like you said, when you have the word parlor, sometimes that does have a negative connotation to that. So we do, again, thank you for remaining in the city and being a part of our business community. Okay, um, right now then, I, if I can have a motion to approve resolution number two-three-zero-dash-two-zero-two-three for conditional use permit, CUP case number eight-three-four. Can I have a motion?
I'll move. Item number seven?
Been moved. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Flores. Planning Secretary, please call the roll.
Definitely, Madam Chair, Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Ayala?
Aye.
Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five-zero?
The attorney, please?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. The Planning Commission's approval of this item tonight will take effect fourteen days after the applicant receives written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within fourteen days.
Thank you. Item number eight, new business. Statutory exempt CEQA guidelines, section one-five-three-seven-eight, B-five and one-five-zero-six-one-B-three, City of Santa Fe Springs Transportation Study Guidelines. I would like to call upon Assistant Planning Director Quan Nguyen to please present item number eight, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, just a quick recap, uh, to find the commissioners of the steps taken so far. Um, you know, this project dates back to October two thousand twenty-one, when staff had our kickoff meeting with, uh, peer and peers, uh, our selected consultant to prepare the transportation study guidelines. Um, that was, um, prompted by Senate Bill seven forty-three, which was signed into law in two thousand thirteen. Um, it removed the level of service as a primary measure for transportation impacts, um, related to CEQA. And instead, um, vehicle miles traveled was selected as the preferred metric. Just real quickly, the main difference between, um, VMT and LOS is that the VMT analysis focuses on regional impacts, whereas the LOS analysis focuses on local, uh, transportation impacts. So simply put, um, VMT measures the per capita number of vehicle trips generated by a project um, and estimates the, the distance between the vehicles traveled to and from the project, while LOS measures congestion levels at roadways and intersections. Um, just one thing important to note, um, while, uh, the, the state law did change the way CEQA analyzes traffic, um, cities may still use traffic studies and LOS analysis to understand the project's impact on the local streets. Uh, Santa Fe Springs has selected to do that. Uh, the transportation study guidelines, as you will find, is broken into not only, uh, an analysis and, and guidelines for VMT purposes, but also includes requirements for the LOS analysis as well. Um, before I bring up our traffic consultants who will be doing the presentation for you tonight, um, I do want to take this opportunity to, uh, acknowledge and thank, um, first and foremost, the, um, city's, uh, engineering department, who, uh, the traffic engineer along with their staff assisted with this project. Uh, the city attorney's office, who also reviewed the guidelines, um, and of course, uh, peer and peers. Um, so without. So without, you know, the 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 whole team coming together, this project wouldn't be possible. So with that said, I'd like to bring up Fear and Peers, who will be doing the presentation for you tonight.
Thank you, Quan. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Fatima Rana Ifar with Fear and Peers, and I'm here with my colleague, Marta Povin. And back in August, we presented an overview of the project. I want to do a little bit of a recap, remind of this. This is still a new concept to the city in many jurisdictions. How this goes? Oh. Okay, let me. Um. That's weird. Okay, so I talk about it a little bit. So this is the uh, was supposed to show why we are talking about Senate Bill seven, forty-three. As of January twenty twenty, the state require all the Sequa documents to adopt this measure vehicle mile travels. There was a lot of history behind it to focus more on non-travel or non-auto vehicles impacts. As Quan mentioned, level of service is basically measured a delay experienced by drivers, whereas the vehicle mile travels measures how much impact you put on the region. And not just the vehicles on the road, but also other road users may experience this impact. So the decision was all the jurisdictions may move and for the Sequa purpose, use this V M T measures. To adopt this new Senate bill, there is a process to update their transportation guideline, and the city of Santa Fe Springs started this process. So we collected data, we look at the backgrounds, information, we tested the methodology for a couple of pilot projects that recently have go through the city project. We had looked at the different V M T methodologies and thresholds. I'm gonna talk a little bit about it. And then we looked at beyond what's the Sequa requires. As Quang mentioned, there is a Sequa process, and there's also other requirements that the city can impose on various developments. And then now we are at the stage that looking for approval and adopting this new guidelines. Sure. Okay. Um. I read it. What happened? Okay. Hmm? That's weird. Okay. So I go slowly and read through it. To implement this new methodology, there decisions that we had to make to update guideline. The Governor's Office of Planning and Research provided the guidelines for jurisdictions, how to screen some of the projects. The idea is if the project is very small or if it is located in an area where there's access to high-quality transit, that means they don't have to generate a lot of auto trip and they can use transit. Or there are in areas where we call them low V M T zones. I'm gonna talk about it a little bit later, where means that this is a good area. It's a development that can access other modes. So that's the screening process. That means you don't do, you know, you don't need to do the V M T analysis. The second step that advised by O P R is what V M T methodology you want to adopt. The tool to evaluate the V M T is a little bit more complicated than the level of service. When we were updating the general plan for the city of Santa Fe Spring, we used the SCAG, the original M P O travel demand model, prepared a customized version of that calibrated validated to the travel forecast in city of Santa Fe Spring. So we use that tool to measure vehicle mile travels. The method or metric that was adopted was the vehicle mile travels by employees for the commercial uses and per capita by the for the residential uses. The third step is to adopting a threshold. The O P R recommended an a threshold that is fifteen percent below the existing average for the city or the region. What that means is whatever is the current or the baseline average V M T generated by residents or by the city as calculated by this regional model, the new developments have to try to go fifteen percent below that. If there are fifteen percent below that, that means there is no V M T impact. If there are more than like not fifteen percent below that, they need to provide a V M T mitigation. The V M T mitigations are basically a set of strategies where they manage the trip making by users of the project to use non-auto trip-making purposes. It my colleague will talk about it, basically using buses, other modes, car shares, but not the single occupancy vehicles. And then lastly, if the city wishes to adopt non-Sequo measures, maintain the level of service or other metrics that is of interest of the city. For example, here we had a lot of truck uses. The access is important. That can be part of the guideline. So hopefully, this one, okay. So the proposed transportation guideline for the city of Santa Fe Spring has two parts. The part that go through the Sequa evaluation and basically hold the metric of the V M T. And the other part that we call it roadway operation. Under the roadway operation, we still maintain the level of service for the intersection in some roadway segments. We looked at the truck traffic. Per Sequa trucks are sort of exempt from the evaluation of V M T, but the city chooses to still include the truck traffic as part of the measures for the non-Sequo evaluation. Site access and safety is also an important metric. This site access and safety is also reviewed under the Sequa, but the city wanted to separately evaluate it in more detail under the non-Sequo pieces as well. There is a is it work? Click. Oh, no, you click. Okay, click. There's a short video talking about what is V M T? That helps us understand the bits and pieces that goes into this calculation. So if you can. Thank you.
What is V M T? V M T or vehicle miles traveled refers to the distance that a car travels regardless of how many passengers are in the car. So this car traveling one mile would generate one V M T. And four vehicles traveling ten miles would generate forty V M T. To understand how much V M T a person generates on a typical weekday, it's useful to map their travel throughout the day. In this example, Jess starts the day at home, drives through the coffee shop two miles away, and then heads to work, which is ten miles from the coffee shop. After a day at the office, Jess returns home eleven miles away. Later, Jess heads out and drives one mile to the gas station to fill up before driving another three miles to the grocery store, and then makes the two-mile trip back home. By adding together the miles driven, it is shown that Jess has generated twenty-nine V M T for the entire day. This V M T can be further categorized into the individual trip purposes that motivated each leg of the trip. V M T can be organized into three typical trip purposes. Home to work or H W, home to other or H O, and other to other or O O. This organization is helpful in understanding that trips to and from work tend to generate the most V M T because people are willing to drive longer distances as the benefit of the trip increases. Do you have other questions about V M T that you would like answered? Let us know.
So the first question under this transportation guideline, when do we need to do a V M T analysis? As I mentioned, O P R recommended some screening guideline, and the purpose is sort of a streamline this process. If the project is very small and by a small mean generating less than hundred ten daily vehicle trips. If the project only serves the locals, if it's a retail, a small restaurant, a small coffee shop, that by the nature of this project, people are not gonna make long trips. It's not a Costco. It's not a Target. So it's expected to only serve residents, so not generating much V M T. There are areas in a city where we call them low V M T zones and in the guideline, there is a map of that. Basically, those are the areas that are V M T efficient and access to transit. The mix of the uses are in a way that there are a lot of internal trips. So those are by the calculation, generate less than fifteen percent of the the city average. And also the transit priority area. This this guideline have a definition of what this transit priority area means. It means you have where it is an access to the light rail or if you have a transit where the frequency of the buses are less than fifteen minutes. So those are also be screened out as a for the V M T analysis. Otherwise, the project proceed to have a Sequa V M T analysis. And Marta is gonna explain how that analysis go.
Thank you so much, Fatima. It's great to be back. So, hang on. Okay. So to develop the city's V M T impact thresholds, we use a refined version of the SCAG model that Fatima mentioned earlier for the general plan update to get V M T estimates for the city. These numbers here show you the baseline average V M T by land use type. So we look at the total V M T per service population. That is all of the people who live and work in the city. We look at V M T on the residential side, how much V M T is generated by households in comparison to how many people live in those homes. And then finally, how much V M T is generated by employment in the city as compared to how many employees work in those locations. And to not have a V M T impact, you have to show that your project has a V M T that's at least fifteen percent below or lower than the city's baseline. So in essence, you're showing that your project okay, sorry. You're showing that your project performs better than the average land use type. And that fifteen percent reduction comes from state guidance saying that if we're not continuously reducing our V M T generated by new land use developments, we will not meet our state greenhouse gas emissions targets. So when a project does not screen projects, we have a V M T tool that will kind of show whether or not a project can screen. But for larger projects, a general plan update or a housing element update, you may want to see a more detailed V M T analysis performed. In which case, we would compare the project's V M T to the fifteen percent reduction threshold as shown in that prior table and determine if there are impacts and if mitigation is required. So what do we mean when we talk about mitigation? If a project has a V M T impact, we're focused on finding ways to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips through what we call transportation demand management or T D M. And that can look like providing free transit passes to employees or providing an employer-sponsored van pool, but things in essence that will help reduce the amount of people driving alone to a project site. So this is a snapshot of the city's V M T tool. And this is an Excel-based tool. And in a nutshell, it allows you to plug in a parcel's project number. It gets mapped, and then you plug in the project's land uses. And based on all of the model data that we have, we can pull V M T data by zone. And based off the screening criteria like proximity to transit, it can show you if a project screens out or not. Also, it can calculate the V M T reduction associated with a specific mitigation, such as providing a van pool program. So city staff within a few minutes can determine whether or not a project screens, and this tool can be provided to project applicants to see if they are consistent with the city's transportation study guidelines. All right. So now I'm gonna switch gears. We're going over to the non-Sequo side of things, which should be a little more familiar. These guidelines were developed in consultation with city staff over the course of months. So thank you so much for all the support. A project will require a local transportation assessment or L T A if it generates any additional vehicle trips in the peak hour. And the assessment will include level of service analysis using highway capacity methodologies, so best practices. So the report contents will include this list here as shown in the PowerPoint, but it will include things like a project description, L O S analysis to identify operational deficiencies at intersections and things like a truck operations assessments to make sure that trucks have sufficient space to maneuver about and around the project site. Study location will be a part of the L T A include all primary project driveways, all signalized and unsignalized intersections within a thousand feet of primary project driveways in or outside of the city, all signalized intersections within a half-mile radius where the project would add any peak hour trips in or outside of the city. All right, final slide. So I just wanted to, we've covered S B seven, ninety-three. I know it's a lot. It's a big change. So thank you. And we've discussed the Sequa and the non-Sequo pieces of this, the transportation study guidelines. I also want to thank city staff for all of the guidance throughout all these months in developing these guidelines. We really, really appreciate it. And pending your recommendation to city council, we hope to have the transportation study guidelines adopted by city council next month. So thank you so much, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners at this time have questions regarding this item? Is there a motion to approve staff's recommendation to adopt resolution number two, two, eight, dash two, zero, two, three to recommend that the city council adopt the city of Santa Fe Springs transportation study guidelines?
I actually also like to add to the recommendation and the action to find that this project is exempt from Sequa.
Thank you, Quan. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Mora. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ayala, Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Charayala?
Aye.
Chair Carver Hall?
Aye.
Passes five, zero?
So ordered.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, consent items. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion or roll call vote. Anytime, any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the planning commission. Bless you. Bless you. No, you're fine. Item A, conditional use permit, case number seven, 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 dash three. A request for a time extension of conditional use permit, case number seven, 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 which allowed the establishment operation and maintenance of a convenience store at one, three, four, one, seven, Rosecrance Avenue. APN eight, zero, five, nine, dash zero, zero, three, dash zero, three, five, within the M one light manufacturing zone. For consent item nine A, is there a motion and a second for approval for item number nine A? I entertain a motion, please.
I'll move.
Commissioner Jimenez, item second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Mora, Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Charayala?
Aye.
Chair Carver Hall?
Aye.
Passes five, zero?
So ordered. Item number ten, announcements. Are there any announce, any commissioners that have an announcement that they would like to share? And I'm gonna start this way. Commissioner Jimenez?
Just wanted to share that we had a big turnout at the Easter egg, huh, I should say, or what was it?
Extravaganza.
Extravaganza, yeah. And Mr. John Mora did a great job flipping pancakes. So it was good.
Thank you. Commissioner Mora?
Well, I wasn't alone. Commissioner Jimenez was there as well. Using a little machine that kept getting stuck because we put chocolate chips in them. Maybe asleep. But I know it was a great turnout. The community came out. It seemed like it was bigger than we had last year at Los Angeles Park. And that line did not stop. They were patient getting their pancakes and it was very well organized. So I know that parking wreck's not here, but everybody involved did an incredible job putting that that event together. And it was a lot of fun. So, yeah, and also looking forward to Art Fest.
Yes. Commissioner Ayala?
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Flores?
Nothing.
And I would just like to say thank you to Commissioner. And I would just like to say thank you to Commissioner Jimenez and Mora for being our cooks. We also had, uh, Traffic Commissioner Blake, um, Carter and a few residents from here. I know one of them was Commissioner Ayala's, uh, daughter, because she's a princess, so they were going around selling. And it was an extremely great event for the City of Santa Fe Springs, um, Sister Cities Program, which, uh, we're still counting monies, but right now we're in the positive about twenty-one hundred from just there. And we did, as you know, far exceed from what was sold last year, so that was really good. And like Commissioner Mora said, I'd like to invite everybody to Art Fest, which is the last Thursday and Friday. Uh, Commissioner Jimenez is our chairperson of the Heritage Arts and I am vice chair. Uh, Commissioner Jimenez is also the chair of our subcommittee of planning everything on here. So it's been, um, a lot of blood, sweat and tears, but it is going to be an absolute excellent event. You cannot believe the installations that we have planned and there's some surprises and I'm just in awe of everything and the staff, again, um, doing everything, so I appreciate that. And, um, that's it. At this point, I would like to adjourn the meeting at, oh, sorry, oh. Oh, how could I forget my favorite and staff? Go ahead. Staff first, sorry.
Thank you. I have one short item. Um, just want to draw attention to, um, uh, the fact that there are, uh, radius or conflict of interest maps for e- each of the Commissioners. Um, I'm not sure. It's been a while since we sent them out, um, but there's a five-hundred-foot radius as well as a thousand-foot radius. The city attorney's office asked me to remind me of, to remind you about those conflict of interest maps and if you can recuse yourself in the event that a project falls within those radiuses. Uh, and it would be both your residents as well as any business interests that falls within the city boundaries. Uh, I will ask Teresa to follow up with an email with a copy of those radius maps following this meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Kwan, I have a follow-up then. We were asked a couple of months ago to also sign um, that, uh, all the committees had to sign regarding like, the wording that came across what we caught on was that it said that it did not pertain to city and employees, but as in a sense, we are, but yet they still asked us to sign that. Remember those forms that on the committees. It's okay then? Okay.
Madam Chair, to clarify, um, you signed it as a committee member, not as a commissioner.
Okay.
And the reason why is because staff did not feel that commissioners should sign a committee form. So they're supposed to come up with one for commissioners now.
Okay, so it was okay for us to sign that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You signed it as a committee member for other committees, so staff members have not received one if they're not participating in another committee, because this is a commission. It was different wording. And we brought it to the attention of, um, HR.
You're the best. Claudia?
I have nothing to share.
You're the best. Oh. Superman. Go ahead, sir.
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so now we will adjourn at seven fifteen. Thank you.